Did we hear from Mr. Feeny, Sheriff?
I did not.
Okay.
But you know when you read the email, there was no problem.
So sorry, but we're running a bit behind. So we'll get started calling the meeting back into public session. And we'll start with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I remind everyone that the meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. And remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to notify me as chair, and I'll inform the public of the recording as is required by the open meeting law. Only one breath. We'll start with public comment. Please limit public comment to two minutes per individual to items that are not on tonight's meeting agenda. There's no debate or action taken. And the chair may allow public comment on tonight's agenda items when they occur during the meeting. Is there any public comment? All right, and we're missing our student advisor tonight. So we get to start off with a presentation by Nigerian exchange student Nana Umar. Come on up. So the word had already made it to me from Morse Pond about how wonderful your presentation is. So I am so looking forward to hearing what you have to tell us.
So I'm Nana Firdosi Umar from Kaduna, Nigeria. And this is my family right here. I have four siblings, two sisters and two brothers. My sister that is wearing her hijab is actually celebrating her birthday too.
Could you shut the leg up, at least the front, please?
And this is my second wonderful family, my host mom, her brothers, the FHS Science Department head, she's right here. So my scholarship. I'm here in the US with AFS and KLES program. That's the Kennel-Lugayout Exchange Study. So it is funded by the US Department of State. And the program's goal is to promote cultural mutual understanding between America and predominantly Muslim countries. So I decided to study because I wanted to learn about American culture and clear up some stereotypes about America. Because there are lots of stereotype in about America and its people. It's kind of good that I've started to clear it up. So also, I love adventures. So I saw it as an opportunity to explore and have mind blowing experiences. And I took it as an opportunity to learn about other cultural backgrounds also. So when I got to the US, what surprised me the most was how cold the ocean is. I was like, I really love the ocean, but it was really cold. I didn't believe it when people told me it was gonna get like really cold, like colder. Like, okay, I wasn't prepared to see ice. That was the same beach I was in, like it was all frozen. It's kind of like a miracle to me. So I love pizza. That's like, that's like, I don't know, like that's my favorite food here, the pizza. Because like I love mozzarella cheese and I can add mozzarella cheese anytime my mom orders pizza. And so, yeah, I love the culture, the hospitality, like everyone is so nice to me. And so my country, Nigeria, the population is 186 million. So it's the seventh biggest country in the world. Languages spoken, 520 languages, and we have 250 ethnic groups. The major religion, some 50% of Nigerians practice Islam, while 40% practice Christianity and 10% of Nigerians kind of like practice, I mean worship kind of locally. So the currency is naira, 261 naira to $1. And the capital city of Nigeria is federal capital territory Abuja. So that's Nigeria, it's located in West Africa. And so the flag of Nigeria is green, white, green. The green standard for agriculture, while the white stands for peace and strength. And that's where I live in Nigeria, Kaduna State. It's close to Abuja. And if you like look down, there is where it says Kogi State. That's my state of origin. So economic resources, agriculture and petroleum. So Nigeria's economic resources until, I'm sorry, up until the, let's see, late 70s. Or yeah, late 70s was agriculture, but because of the booming oil, Nigerians abandoned agriculture and went back to oil, which made Nigeria go into economic recession in 2015. And Nigeria was really, really down at that period of time. But the government are trying to kind of bring it back to her feet by investing in agriculture now. So the natural resources, tin and other stuff out there. And so the current political leader is His Excellency President Muhammadu Buhari. And he was elected democratically. So he's with his vice president in the black attire, kind of blue, and his wife and his son. So this is the president in his Igbo attire. So the people of Nigeria, Nigeria has three major ethnic group. And it is Yoruba, Hausa and Igbo. And this is like how to say hello and thank you in the three major ethnic group. So the group, the one at the down which is Ibera, is my ethnic group. So I'm an Ibera person, I'm not part of the three ethnic group, but I can speak the three languages. And my own language too. So this is what Hausa Muslim people look like. So the two ladies in the same picture over at the left hand side, kind of like Muslims wearing the hijab. And the other two, the one at the down is a Hausa royalty. And the one at the top side is the bride. And this is my brother. Yeah, the little one. His name is Amir Abdalhakim, and his birthday is on Friday. He's really cute. And so this is a Hausa northern man. So Nupi is an ethnic group in Nigeria. And so those two ladies, her Nupi ladies, but they're in the Atempa northern clothes, sorry clothes. So the other ones are Do Yoruba brides. And this is the Igbo ethnic group. That's what they look like, I mean, that's what they dress in. So this is an Igbo kid, and that's also a Yoruba kid. So this is what Ibera people kind of dress like. I have my Ibera head scarf on. It's kind of like a unique fabric. And so this is, oh no, this is where I get homesick. So this is the masara, roasted corn, and the wena, which is also known as rice cake. And this is the dough, it's called fried plantain, I mean, sorry, it's fried plantain actually. So it's called the dough in Yoruba. And this is called apapa. It's made with black eyed peas and it's an Ibera food. And that's jollof rice, which is a Hausa food, the faduka. And that's shinkafan kwa kwa, which is coconut rice. It's an Igbo food. And that's yellow fried rice, which is kind of like a modern food in Nigeria. And that's amala and ewedu soup, which is a Yoruba food. I was so happy when my host mom surprised me with it when we went to Maryland. They took me to a restaurant, a Nigerian restaurant, I was so happy. Yeah, and so this is eba and kasava, I mean, eba, which is kasava meal. And edikai kong soup, which is just a vegetable soup, and it's an Igbo food. So the opera soup we tour is a Hausa food. All right, good. So the differences between schools in Nigeria and the US. So the uniforms, in Nigeria, we wear uniforms. And also, we kind of like get inspected in schools. Like you get inspected if you don't, like to see if you braided your hair, because we give hairstyles in school. And so you must braid your hair before you come to school. And you must like cut your fingernails and make sure it's clean. And also, you must, your school uniform must be neat. And you must take your bath before coming to school, because like they check you. I don't know how they know if you don't take your bath, but they know. So the cafeteria food, cafeteria food in Nigeria is really, really great, like really great. There is like nothing greater than it. And I know my mom's food is greater than it, actually. So but the cafeteria food here is actually like not bad. I won't say bad, but it's kind of manageable. I don't have any option if I don't have anything to eat. Then just to eat the cafeteria food is not really great. And it's like really bad when they have pepper in the pizza, because I don't eat ham, I don't eat pork, because I'm a Muslim. So they have like ham sandwich, pork stuff, like it's just too much. And I'm like, okay, I'm just gonna stick with chips. So what surprised me most about FHS, it's how like the kids are really rude to their teachers. Like in my school back at home, like you cannot be rude to teachers. Like it's just not acceptable. Like it's even rare for a kid to be rude to the teachers because of the penalties, like guided, like surrounding it. So the punishment for being rude to teachers back at home is that the kids get a detention for 10, sorry, for one week. Okay, what am I saying? Calm down. For one week. And so during the time of the detention, the kid washes the restroom for the whole detention time. And also, they must do all the assignments during detention's time, even if they don't go to the classroom to take notes or something like that. And also, they kind of run errands for the teachers, like little errands, like go get me coffee from the cafeteria or go get me stuff, like just little errands. And they have to write like, I'm sorry, and I promise never to do this again. In a very, like, there is this long book back at home. It's longer than the A4 paper. And it's kind of like more than 80 pages. And they need to write it like for the, like in the entire book. And also, they get a suspension for one week. And for that entire whole week, they must like take notes, I mean, they must like kind of research like what the teachers are teaching in school and kind of like follow up with them. And they must also do all the assignments and turn it in when it's due. They don't have excuse for not turning it in. And when they come back from the suspension, they need to go and apologize to the teachers and beg for forgiveness. Yeah, and if they're not forgiven, then they have a bad name. And also, their names go to the black book. So no one wants their name to go to the black book. So like it's really, really, I was like really, really surprised that they're rude to teachers. And so classes, our classes are like kind of categorized like in three categories. And we have science, art and commerce class. So I'm a science student and I take 13 subjects. And yeah, and in, yeah. So it's like really kind of, like, it's not that much for arts, but when I came here and I was taking like six subjects, I'm like, wow. But it's not that wow, because it's really hard here. Yeah, so. So access to computers, we have access to computers, but we don't have like a lot of access to computers. Like arts and commerce class can get more access to computers, because they use it more than us. But we get more access to the labs than they do. So although they take biology, so they need the lab too. But because Nigeria is a developing country, we don't really have that much access, like how much, like like every kid has a Chromebook to use here, but we don't really have that at home. So we take notes, and that's why I'm used to taking notes. I'm not used to like the computer stuff, like taking notes, no. So yeah, for the labs and libraries, some people ask me if we do have labs and libraries at home. Yeah, we do have labs and libraries, so it's, there's much difference in that. And we go to labs like in tree, like they break us into tree because of like how much, like I'm a science student and we have like 77 kids in my class. So we have to like
Seventy-seven?
Yeah, so we kind of like have to go in like groups and like with different teachers, so we understand whatever we are doing in the lab. So. So sports and after school activities, we have like all spots, even including hockey. But like we don't have, we don't play hockey in my school, because like we just don't have the facilities to do that. Some schools have it, especially in Lagos, they do have it. The only spot we don't play Nigeria is American football. I don't think anyone will want to take the risk of playing American football, because it's like, I like it, but like it's kind of, I just feel like they're kind of like too hard on each other. Is it a boxing game or what? So and after school activities, so we have lots of after school activities. We can, we have debates, we have debates, we have quiz competitions, we have spelling bee competitions and a lot of stuff. Like that's what I've never, I've not seen here, like the debates, the quiz. I mean, we do quizzes in class, but the quiz is kind of like different. Our quiz is like competition, like inter-school competition or inter-class competitions. So like that's the difference between the after school activities that I've not seen here. So let's see, so these are some pictures about, of schools. So we have like rural schools, suburb schools and urban schools. So this are like, this are rural schools. So the picture down there is a really, really like poor state. As you can see, like individuals just kind of like, like educated individuals just kind of pick kids up off the street and kind of like start building, buildings to like start school for them. And if they can't complete it, they just leave it like a half building. And so they're like learning from, I mean, in an uncompleted, uncompleted building. Okay, so that's kind of like a rural school, but it's still like, not all developed, but still like better than that one. And so as you can see, like the kind of like, private individuals donate like computer or stuff to schools to kind of help them. So it's like, it's just like an aid. In Nigeria, we don't have, we don't really have like scholarship aids or grants. I mean, we have it, but it's not functioning. So I just feel like we don't have it, because Nigeria is still developing and they need all the money they need to like bring her to like, to make her a developed country. So this is a suburb school. It's kind of like, it's a suburban, urban school. Like the kids in blue are suburb, like, they're like in suburb school. And so the others are like suburb, public school, yeah, they're public schools. So that's what they look like. So I go to all girls school, they're also all boys school and they're mixed school. So some schools, I mean, schools are kind of like separated. It just depends on what happened and why did they get separated, which is kind of like, I don't think anyone wants to know, because it's really bad. So these are private schools. The other one is like private all boys school. So that's like them in the lab. And this is a boarding school. Really looks fancy, it's a private school. So any questions before I show you what people ask me?
I'm sure there are. Does anybody have any questions or curiosities? Leah?
Okay.
How did you find out about the scholarship opportunity in Nigeria?
It was actually a quiz competition. So my school was sent later to present their students. I won't say like best student, because I'm not the best student. So they just like asked them to send their, any student they want to send to kind of compete for the scholarship. And five of us were picked, but I was the only one that got picked.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? How old are you?
I'm 17.
You're very brave, because that takes a lot of courage to come here from so far away, not knowing anything. So I give you a lot of credit for that.
Yeah, all right.
Terry? How long did you study English before you came here?
I started studying English since I started going to school. Yeah. So Nigeria, yeah, the international language of Nigeria is English, like the language of instruction, I mean, is English.
Oh, the language of instructionism.
Because Nigeria was a British colony, so.
So you talked about the stereotypes of the United States. Have any of your views on some of those stereotypes changed since you've been here?
Yes, it's actually, has changed, because like when I was coming here, some people were like discouraging my parents, like, don't allow her go, they're really bad people and stuff. My dad was like, you can't say that, because you've never met anyone. So she should go and she'll know if they're bad or not bad. Like, I mean, like Americans are not bad, like they're really nice. Like, I was kind of like scared, like what people were saying, but because my dad like raised us up not to believe in stereotypes. So I just like to get, like as a challenge, just come and see whatever is happening. Yeah, so, yeah.
And is there anything that's really surprised you about the United States?
I mean, like how cold it is. Yeah, like, I mean, like it's, I just, like, it's just like really surprising. Like I'm walking on the road and I'm like seeing ice, I'm like, what? Like, I know like whenever it's raining back at home, there's sometimes that it's like little ice that kind of fall, but it's not like seeing ice, like the road being frozen, like seriously, it's really
Yeah, maybe like a hail, like when it's warm, yeah.
Yeah, and also sticker, sticker shock, yeah, I got that sticker shock. Like when I went to the grocery store with my mom, and I saw like a big bag of cashew, it was like two something, and I saw a little one, it was like five, and I'm like, okay, what, like, I can just take the big one and like eat any of mine I want to eat and throw the rest away, like, yeah. Yeah, so like, I don't know why they do that, because like it's the same cashew nuts and like
Melissa, when did you get here?
I got here in August.
And the water was cold?
Yeah, to me, it was cool. Lower than 70 degrees.
Presume maybe you were like over by Old Silver by the looks of that sunset. All right. And how much longer are you here?
I'm here for the whole school year.
Great.
Yeah.
That's exciting. Do you think that, that your school would be, or you would be interested in having, like have you made any friends that you think might want to visit and, and see what it's like going the opposite direction to reduce the stereotypes of Nigeria as well?
Yeah, I guess so, but I don't actually like, kind of like advise anyone to go to Nigeria in this like period of time, because Nigeria is still like in tomorrow kind of. So not now, like maybe in near future, but not now.
So I had, when I was in school, I had an exchange student live with us, and then I ended up going. He went on vacation with my friend, and I went to his family's house in Venezuela because of that exact same thing, you know, that exchange. It would be nice if someone, eventually, because they knew you, was interested in traveling. Any other questions?
All right, so no one wants to ask me like any, like, just like, just any question, like just any question you could think of, like, just any.
Go for it.
So I think I heard you say that the classes were more difficult here as compared to home. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yeah, so like for math, let me use math as an example. So for math, like here, it's kind of like categorized, like Algebra 1, Algebra 2, Geometry, Calculus, something. But back at home, we just take it as math or further maths or general maths. So I took further maths and like we just do everything together, like algebra is like a subject for, on its own. And it's like a very big subject that we kind of like go into in a whole year. So we don't like have it like broken down, like you need to go through this or something.
And I have another question. So if you were disrespectful to a teacher and you got your name in the black book, what happens when you go home?
When you go home, your parents are just, I mean, first, when you go home, some kids kind of like don't go home, don't go to their homes, and they dodge and the police, whenever the police kind of like caught, they get hold of them, they're in big trouble. And when they go home, they're like in bigger trouble, because their parents won't take it. And they'll be grounded and kind of like, like, it's just like they don't get any privilege anymore. Yeah, so and when they go home, like from school, and when, when they get, I mean, that name to colleges, like they're just known as as bad kids and they don't want to be like taken serious or something like that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Terry? Have you ever, do teachers often not accept the student apology?
Oh, no, they do accept the apology.
Okay, so that's unusual.
Yeah, that's unusual. It's like, it's just like something that the parents like kind of say, if the teacher don't like accept your apology, then that's it, you know, like something like that. So, okay.
Question about the setup of schools. So do you go to school for high school, do you go to school the whole day? Is it like here, how you go in the morning and then you stay until the afternoon?
Oh, yeah, 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 that's it. We go to school by seven and we come back home by 2 o'clock.
And is your high school separate, or is it with younger students?
No, it's separate.
Separate?
Yeah.
And what age do you graduate from high school?
It's the same as this.
Around 18 or 17?
Actually, I'm done with high school, back at home. And I completed my school when I was 16. Yeah.
So you can complete as soon as
Yes, like it's kind of around 16, 17 upward.
When you complete it, you, when you've done everything, you're done. Patrick?
Do you have any plans for college or university?
Oh, yes, I do. Actually, I was planning to come to college here, because like, back at home, because Nigeria is so a developing country, like everything is really hard, the colleges are like expensive. I don't know, I mean, as a developing country, it's not supposed to be expensive, but I don't know how your plan is. So it's really expensive and you don't have like financial aids like to help parents and stuff. And the economy is really bad at this time of the year. So I just plan to come back here and go to college.
What do you and your friends like to do for fun on the weekends?
All right, so we like to hang out, like we have like lots of places where we hang out, like in restaurants or in gaming, like gaming stores or something, or we like to go make our hair and, yeah, because my mom has a salon and we go there and, okay. When I say salon, I don't mean bar. I was like talking about a salon the other time, and my mom was like, okay, that's a bar. Yeah, she owns a hairdresser store. And so we just go there and like whenever we're here, she's like, just get out. But like, it's friends, so, yeah, and we like to like sleep over at friends' house. So when I'm, like, since I came here, I have like friends, but like we don't really go out like how I kind of like want us to go out. I just feel like teenagers here are really like busy. Back at home, we are also busy, but like, we still get time to go out. But it's like anytime I'm like, oh, let's go, oh, I'm busy, I have this, I have that, I'm like, okay. Yeah, so, yeah. All right, any more?
Any last question? Yes, since you go to school for seven, I have, it's a two-part question.
All right.
Is it difficult to get up and be at school for 7 o'clock?
It's not as difficult as it is here, because like I have to get up like at 5 here to like start preparing myself to go to school. So back at home, it's not difficult, because it's not, it's not cold and like it's not dark. It's not that dark. And so back at home, I wake up sometimes by 4, because I need to pray. And I have like four siblings that I need to help my mom like prepare them for school. And prepare myself to go to school, because I'm the head girl, I was the head girl of my school, of my school. because I'm the head girl, I was the head girl of my school, um, of my school, all right. Kind of like have, um, kind of pronunciation stuff, so, yeah, so, um, I'm the head girl, I was the head girl of my school, and that's the president of the school, so, um, I needed to be in school before some teachers and students, yeah, so, um, it's not hard to.
And then my second, uh, part to my question is, how's your homework at home compared to here?
My homework at home is not, I mean, oh yeah, back at home, is not as hard as it is here, because sometimes I get, I kind of forget to turn things in here, yeah, which is really a bad, like, problem, because I kind of get half credit, and I'm like, "Wait, what?" Like, it's just to, I mean, back at home, we just need to write it and submit it to our teachers, but here, you have to like do everything online and turn it in, which is like really, I'm not, I'm not used to that stuff, and it really takes time to get used to it, so, yeah. All right, so those are weird questions I've been asked, good, I did not hear any here, so, um. Yeah, so, um, they asked me if I have elephants in my backyard, I'm like, "Wait, who will have an elephant in your backyard?" Like, is that what they think of Nigerians, like, is that what they think of Africans generally? I don't know, like, elephants, I, I've never, like, I've seen an elephant in the zoo, and. Yeah, and, um, I've seen an elephant, I, I think, uh, when we went to Yankari, um, National Park in Baochi State, but I did not see like a close view, like, from, um, afar, it's kind of like an open, kind of like habitat for them, so we were in the van, so we won't like get eaten by a lion or something, so, yeah, it was like real, like, we were in a jungle, but it's, um, kind of safe, and so they asked me if I play with snakes, I'm really terrified of snakes, like, I hate snakes. I've seen snakes a couple of times, but like, not like flee with, I mean, I can't even go near where snake like, I don't know, I don't want to think of it, and so, um, they asked me if I see li- like lions every day. I told a friend of mine here that, um, I'm from the lion clan, so ethnic groups in Nigeria, um, sorry, in Nigeria kind of like have clans, so I am from the lion clan, and, um, she asked me if I see lions every day, and I'm like, "I've just seen li- like lion, let's see," I was trying to like count how many times I've seen lions, because like, I think I've just seen lions like twice. Um, like, for the whole sixteen years I was in Nigeria, like, just twice, I've never, like, I don't, I don't go near lions, and I'm really terrified of them, and because I'm from the lion clan, doesn't mean that it can eat me, so. Um, they asked me if I have monkeys or gorillas for pets, and I, I mean, I just kind of like answered the question with a question, if you, um, I wait, if, if I had a monkey or a gorilla for a pet, like, would I have a face now? Like, I wouldn't have a face, like, I would just be faceless, yeah, because they would tear it off, so. They asked me if my family have scars, so for that, my family don't have scars. Um, some ethnic groups in Nigeria have scars, like Djeruba ethnic groups don't really have like big scars, but we don't have scars, yeah, so, that's it, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Well, it lived up to the hype, I had heard all about how good it was, and it was just as good. Thank you so much for taking the time to come and talk with us.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm glad to have met you, I'm, I'm sure we'll see your name in the future.
Thank you.
All right, it's spectacular.
Thank you so much.
My gosh.
Isn't she beautiful?
Oh, spectacular.
Sweet.
Smart. Uh, okay, so we're going to go from something really aw- awesome to something really awful, um, sorry. Uh, would you like to say something? Is there anything you want to say?
No. Um, I am retiring at the end of the year, and I just have been honored to cap my twenty-five-year career with the past three years as your superintendent. It's been amazing, and we have an amazing team, the district, I believe, is in really good shape, and you have teachers who are incredibly invested in our kids in this community, and we are very, very lucky, and I'm very sad. Melissa.
Sorry.
Please don't.
Try not to cry.
Uh, I, I just got a little bit upset with Steve Edwards prior to this meeting, because he had some very kind words to say to me, and it was, sorry.
It's hard for us too, um, so, I think I can speak for the committee, saying that we would all very much have liked to keep you for like, at least, I don't know how many more years, many? Um, but, you're right, the district is in a really great place, and I think we're all confident that the team that you have around you will continue to work while you're on your boat. Or, or wherever, um, enjoying your time, um, because you deserve it, um, it's been a really huge commitment to Falmouth Public Schools, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, but you're working until the end of June.
I was going to say, we have a lot of work to do between now and June, so I kind of put, um, walking away from it aside until the thirtieth of June, and, um, my team knows that we're here, and we've got a lot to do, and we're ready to do it. We're just going to keep moving.
Okay, moving on to business, um, because that's all we can do, is move forward. So, next we have acting on the field trip request for National Music Conference from March seventh to the tenth. Come on up, Mr. Edwards.
Hi. And I'd like to clarify, I don't think my superintendent was upset with me.
No, no, I'm sorry. If so, she's leaving, so. Sorry.
No, we're.
There's going to be a lot of that.
We're very appreciative for all of Nancy's work, uh, it's been wonderful. Uh, I'm here seeking the school committee approval for a trip that, uh, it's really a big honor. Isabel Edgar, a student at FHS, um, has been accepted to attend the American Choral Directors Association, uh, conference, Eastern Division. Uh, I want to clarify a little bit about what that is, but I also want to mention, I'm, I'm asking for, uh, the permission that our music director, Paige Taylor, the choral director of the high school, attend as her chaperone as well. The dates for the event are March seventh through tenth, and it'll be taking place in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Isabel Edgar was selected to participate after sending an audition tape, uh, that consisted of a prepared piece, a small solo, and scales last spring. So, they run these conferences every other year, not every year, and so, uh, we, we have a student of this kind of talent, we want to make sure that we get those tapes in. They also, uh, would only accept students that were, uh, perhaps at the highest level of the All-State score, so that gives you some idea of where Isabel is at. Uh, she was competing against other high school students in the eastern region, consisting of Rhode Island, Vermont, Connecticut, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Maine, so you can guess, this is quite an honor for her. The students spend three days under the baton of Dr. David Freiling, Director of Choral Activities at Hostra University, where he conducts both the Select Hostra Corral and the Hostra Chamber Choir, and teaches Beginning and Advanced Studies in Choral Conducting, as well as graduate-level workshops in Choral Conducting and Choral Literature. In addition, he serves as the adjunct professor for the Hostra School of Education, where he supervises choral music education, student teachers during their field placements. He also was hired to conduct our Southeast Festival last year in the state of Massachusetts. Izzy will, uh, prepare the music ahead of time with Paige, and then rehearse with Dr. Freiling for those three days, uh, with a concert on the last day. Paige will attend as her chaperone, and will also attend the ACDA Conference occurring simultaneously. So, while, uh, Izzy is rehearsing, just want to be clear, Paige will be at the conferences and taking in the workshops. The choral boosters have offered to pay for Izzy's admission fee, which includes room and board. The family will be responsible for the flight costs, and the student is currently re-enrolled at FHS. She was attending a school in Colorado this past semester, but the family, as I said, has enrolled her as of last week in, at Falmouth High School, in fact, I saw her, uh, yesterday, uh, so, so that she would be eligible for this trip. They went through all of that. Uh, I've been in contact with them since, I think, uh, November, and, uh, we were assured that they would come back, and they, they have.
So can I ask you, so, she's, I, I recognize her name, so she is a, they live in Falmouth, right?
They do.
And she was a student at FHS prior to?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and then went to this music school in Colorado for a short period of time.
Okay.
And has come back.
That was confusing.
Any other questions?
How long was she at the music school in Colorado?
Just this semester, this past semester.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I think they started actually technically over the summer, but I, don't quote me on that, I'm not sure.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I was, I was, I was all set, I, I'm asking, you have the opportunity, any more questions?
Yeah, are there questions?
I guess that's clear, that, that she is a student in Falmouth High School now, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so, I guess I have a couple of questions, um, one is, do you ha- and I might be asking you an impossible thing, if I, I'm really sorry, um, just say so, whether or not this is, how this usually goes, um, that a student is accompanied by one teacher, like, there's a lot of students that are going to this thing, whether, that are all, not ours, but from all over the place.
Eastern Division, correct.
Right, that are all meeting in Pittsburgh, um, so is this the common model? It just strikes me as being really, uh, unusual to approve a field trip that's really for one kid. Do you happen to know how other schools handle it?
There's not much comment about it at all, actually, the, the idea that we have a kid that's, uh, been accepted into Eastern Division, anything, is not common, uh, it's, it's been a great honor for Isabel. Uh, we had a student in my first year of teaching at Falmouth High School, uh, who had was accepted to the Eastern Region, uh, excuse me, Eastern Division, uh, National Conference in Hartford, Connecticut that year. Since then, I'm not sure we've had Eastern Division ACDA. I know Nell Byrne, a couple of years ago, was accepted into the, um, uh, Eastern Division, being, again, a New England mainly, uh, piece. It, it's the same concept, uh, we use the same protocols, uh, we, we have, we're fortunate to have, you know, a lot of talented students here in Falmouth, uh, but this is definitely a big honor, and so, I'm here because we wanted to make sure that the school committee was aware we were taking, uh, a student out of state, uh, and we wanted to represent with a chaperone, so, uh, I think protocols require, that I asked for.
Yeah, so, with the other students, was there a staff member who went with them?
Yes.
For those two?
I went with, uh, the student when we went to Hartford, um, I was there, and I think Todd Fruth accompanied, um, Nell. When, when Nell went away, so. Anything else? It's pretty exciting.
It's amazing, and it's, it seems like an incredible opportunity, um, and I'm hung up on ha- sending a staff member with one student, um.
You know, I, I thought someone might, uh, so I have some, some information for you about what Paige will be doing there.
Please, tell me, because I, I don't want to have to.
That's fair.
I don't want to have to say no, but I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it on a budget level, and, uh, so please, tell me.
Sure, sure. We belong, Paige and I, belong to the American Choral Directors Association, so again, this is the Eastern Division piece of that, all right, but it again, is it the National Association of Educators. Having said that, ACDA exists within our curriculum in terms of the kinds of resources we provide for choral techniques and things like that, but you don't usually get an opportunity to work with the colleagues within that association like she'll be able to do at this conference. She's going to have an opportunity to listen to live choirs for the three days, representing all of these states, and some from around the world, so she'll have an opportunity to rub elbows with some of those conductors, get ideas, resources, she'll have an opportunity to look at the music that they're, they're using in concert, uh, and review it with her peers and her constituents, uh, there are sessions offered for the following, I, I did a little homework on this, I wanted to make sure I was clear on it, the introverted conductor, uh, quite frankly, apparently, there's a lot of, a lot of concern for choral directors and being introverts, they're not necessarily, uh, displaying the, the, the most positive stage presence in front of kids, and it's really important that they do that, so there's going to be some sessions on that, not saying that Paige needs that, but, uh, it's available to her, uh, there's also going to be safe spaces in the choral classroom. Not to bring up a bad memory, but years ago, uh, we had a terrible loss, and the band room became a safe place for those kids, so I can tell you firsthand how important it is that our young teachers, like Mrs. Taylor, uh, learn what that's all about, and provide that to our students here in Falmouth. We have obvious vocal techniques will be available to her, and opportunities for transgender students in the choral room, which is a brand-new concept, uh, in our field, so we're working on, you know, providing some, uh, options and, and being accessible, and I think it's really important that our teachers have an opportunity to, uh, learn in these kinds of environments, you know? Uh, this isn't being offered in the MENC Conference, and it's not being offered in the American Band Directors Association, it's being offered at ACDA. There's score preparation, and as I said, sight reading is always a must, so thi- this is just some of the sessions that'll be available to her.
Let me ask a question, so Steve, is this professional development?
It is.
And are there PDPs awarded?
There are.
Because that is not information that I did not have.
I, I wasn't aware until today that the PDPs were for sure, please understand that as they're promoting this conference, I don't always find that out until a little later in the game, but, yeah, there's, there's a large number of sessions, and I found out that several of them will be offered PDPs, but I'm still not confirmed on who's offering those PDPs.
That makes me feel a little bit better.
Can I ask, I'm clarifying, actually, it's just me kind of figuring this out in my, in my own head, but, um, for, for Paige Taylor, she could have put in a request to do this professional development, otherwise, like, even if there wasn't a student going, she could have put a request in to go to this conference.
For sure.
And been awarded that request, so this is just kind of, this is kind of a bonus, this is a two for, for, you get the student in this amazing opportunity that Isabel Edgar has, um, with her talent, and then you also have the director being able to access this professional development, which she could have done anyway, but now she also gets to help out and watch Isabel for being there. So, I think in, in that aspect, I feel comfortable with this, um, but it is, you know, it's a unique situation, having one student, but in the bonus of this, she's going to go, the director, she's going to go and learn all of these things, and then bring it back to Falmouth and make our program stronger.
Absolutely.
That's great.
You know, I, I've been working real hard to try to encourage more and more of our music teachers to attend All-State, the All-State Conference, which is held in Boston, so it's not, it's not out of state, and, and I've attended it many, many times, and the information I'm able to bring back from All-State is vital to the improvements of our programs and the kinds of things we can offer to our kids. This one being a national conference, uh, is going to just blow her away, and I, I can't wait to talk to her after she gets back to find out what she wants to do with our kids, it's going to be really exciting.
Yeah. Melissa?
Will Ms. Taylor be offering some, um, notes or a class or, um, conference with her peers?
Here's hoping.
To share the information that she learned while she was there and spread the love?
I don't mind saying that, you know, in our work in Curriculum Council with Sonia, uh, we often talk about encouraging our, our teachers to share their, with the other teachers, I've been working on that in our department, we've done that in the art department already, uh, and we're, we're nearing that, uh, with regards to the music teachers, but again, these kinds of opportunities only offer more information to share, so, yeah, I'm hoping, I have encouraged all of our music teachers to do so, they're just not there yet, we also have quite a few young music teachers in our district, so, as they become more confident, as they attend more of these conferences, they'll gain that, uh, that knowledge and experience, and that's what they need.
Any last questions?
I'll make that motion to approve, um, to approve the field trip requests for National Music Conference, March seventh to tenth.
Is there a second?
A second, that?
Any discussion?
Um, I have one discussion point, um, and I would just, um, Nancy, I, I would like to he- I know this sounds horrible saying out loud, but I would like to hear, um, if there's any legal, um, or liability issues with sending one student with one adult, um, and I don't know how we could get that, but I, I would just like to have someone else weigh in on any, it, it just, appearance-wise, it doesn't look great, um, so I would like a, a little additional comfort in that.
Can I, can I clarify, you mean in terms of traveling with one another?
Yeah.
To Pittsburgh? Okay. Oftentimes, uh, and I'm talking about me now, having attended many festivals and conferences, I've had to travel with students, it can be a bus, it can be a van. I've had to travel with students, it can be a bus, it can be a van, I've even driven the van, back in the day when we were allowed to do so. I think that it's more common than some people might think, and I can't think of a better person than Paige Taylor to be chaperoning with Isabel. Also, Isabel's family will be there for the duration of the conference.
Okay, I withdraw all of that.
Thank you.
And I wanted to be clear on that, the only thing I need to go further, go deeper with, is that the parents really won't be able to attend the conference, they won't be able to attend the rehearsals. That's where Paige comes in. So, Paige will be onsite at the conference, attending those sessions, but also checking in with Isabel throughout, and then the parents will attend that concert at the end. But it's my understanding that they'll be there for the weekend in Pittsburgh.
Okay, I withdraw all of those things that I said. I just want to, and not just on our side, but also for Ms. Taylor as well, you know, we don't want to put any of our people in a position where anything bad could ever happen. Student, staff, anybody. So, we have a motion, a second, and is there any other discussion?
Sorry, I'm going to throw a little wrench in this now. Okay, so, I'm just getting in this clarification piece. So, Paige Taylor could do this as a professional development, go to the conference. Isabella's family is going?
On what day they arrive, I'm not sure. I was told that they will be there in Pittsburgh.
Okay, so, they're not going the whole time?
I can't confirm that. I'm not sure. I will look into it.
I'm just wondering why we need a, I'm just going back to why we need a field trip request, if it could be a PD and a.
Because you're taking a student out of state.
For the travels.
Right, but if the parents were taking her.
But it doesn't sound like the parents are taking her.
The timing isn't exactly right.
Okay, okay.
If Paige is taking her, the parents will be there.
Correct.
I think that's what speaks to your question.
Okay.
Right, it makes me feel a lot better.
They will be traveling alone together?
To this.
To the place.
There is a flight, yep.
Then the parents will meet them.
And ACDA requires that a chaperone be onsite, so.
Right, so someone has to be there.
Someone has to be there.
Isabel couldn't go by herself.
Correct.
With a parent.
She couldn't go with a parent.
She could if they were there the entire time, as her chaperone.
Please clarify that, Mr. Edgert. So, would the parent be considered the chaperone per their guidelines?
No, the, for example, and I have to go back to Allstate, because to be quite honest with you, I cannot confirm ACDA's policy on this. But the state of Massachusetts for Allstate requires that a certified educator be a chaperone at that conference. And so, like those kinds of conferences and festivals, I'm sure ACDA has a similar policy, which is why Paige came to me in the first place. Now, I don't have any information, I don't have anything in writing that tells me that, and I didn't look that up before I came here tonight, so I can find that out. But I would bet money on it that there's a need to have a certified educator who's a member of that association as a chaperone at that event, which is difficult. Many times, it's difficult.
Any last thoughts? All in favor of approving the field trip to the ACDA All Eastern Choir in Pittsburgh? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Sorry for the barrage of questions.
Sounds okay.
It's unusual, so we just want to, you know, we're doing due diligence.
Follow up with that information, though, is that possible?
I'm going to take my notes.
Okay.
So, I'm following up on the policy for a certified educator being there.
Yes.
As a chaperone, in lieu of a parent as a chaperone.
Right. Do we have to have a certified educator?
I will look into that.
Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
And then also, for Nancy, on the PDP piece, I think we would like, I would like to know.
And confirm PDPs. I will do that as soon as they can.
It'll be great.
And we definitely want to hear about this.
Yeah, because it sounds awesome.
Definitely.
Or we just want her to come in.
All about it.
And Isabella to come in.
Paige, I was very sorry she couldn't be here tonight, she's actually judging recitals and couldn't be here, but I'll make sure that she does follow up.
Great. Thanks for coming.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, from one field trip to another. Mr. Ma, come on up. So, this is a request to approve a exchange program to Spain for the year 2019.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for accepting this proposal, or for accepting my proposal of it. I was approached last June by a phishing email from the U.S. Embassy in Madrid, and they were looking for schools that wanted to cooperate with an organization in Spain called USETAM, which is an organization, it's a collaborative of several schools in the Madrid area, they're bilingual schools, and they're looking for schools in the United States that were open to an exchange program. So, there's a, an organization that is basically saying, we consider this to be an important aspect of education in Spain, and we want to share it with the United States. The studies in the Spanish schools are basically the studies of American culture, and the kids want to get involved in studying our culture. So, I responded and was paired up with a school that they chose. The school is called Colegio Madrigal, Madrigal, Colegio Madrigal, and it's a school in a suburb of Madrid, it's about 20 kilometers from the center, called Fuena La Brada. This used to be a small town when I lived in Madrid, it was a small town outside the city. It had been destroyed during the Civil War because of the invasion or the siege of Madrid, and it's been rebuilt into a, into a section where a lot of people live, but they have to travel into the center to work. So, they built this school there, and I got in touch with the coordinator of a foreign-language training there, and it turns out that the school does offer certain courses in bilingual form. So, students are studying in English and in Spanish there, different courses, I don't know which ones. And I got in touch with the coordinator, and we talked about some very basic issues such as dates, and we were looking at bringing the Spanish group over in November of 2018. I don't know whether you have this information on, okay, you got that full sheet? November of 2018, and we established dates of the 2nd to the 17th. No?
Didn't get that information.
Proposal?
Where is the sheet?
It wasn't distributed? Okay, well, I'll give you most of the information on it. I didn't see it in the packet either, but I wasn't sure how that worked.
It was supposed to be.
Okay.
Is it possible to get, I think we're at a disadvantage if we don't have the copy.
Absolutely. I thought it would be supplied as usual.
Sharon, can I beg you to?
I just have one copy.
We'll make copies.
Good. I supplied you with this, as well as a draft agreement that the organization.
Yeah, it's noted that there's a draft agreement, but we don't actually have it.
Could you copy this as well? Thank you. So, we established a couple of dates, and we discussed the general structure, which is proposed in this draft agreement. It is a two-year program. It's a program in which we begin as a virtual communication between the schools. We will be establishing a connection, if we can, between the two schools, so that students will be sending to me, to an account that I set up in Gmail, emails in Spanish and in English. And I will distribute it to students in the, in a certain number of classes that we are establishing at the school, and they will then respond, sending to me their responses to individual students, and I will send them as a block to a Gmail account that this coordinator will be managing, and he'll distribute it to students there. So, it'll be under continuous monitoring as far as academic pursuits. We will be talking about a project, a project that we have kind of outlined between the two of us. I proposed a project which would take advantage of the scientific community that we have here in Woods Hole and in Falmouth, and it was going to be basically, what is the effect of, or what is the impact of the environment on your daily life? And this is going to be offered to kids to deal with an artistic, scientific, literary, or whatever approach that they want to. When they come here, they will be invited to the MBL, and to HOE, and to other organizations that might want to receive them, and give them a tour of what they're doing. I've already spoken to some people informally, and they're excited about it in those scientific centers. One of the things that they're looking at is being able to present the Spanish-speaking people who are working at the MBL and HOE, and give these Spanish students an idea of, hey, maybe I can go out into the world and work at, in Falmouth as well. And likewise, when we go to Madrid, if we were to go, we would go in April of 2019. It's, I think it coincides exactly with the dates of the French exchange. And they would be showing us what a large bustling, landlocked metropolis has to do with dealing with their environment. So, what is their solid waste management system? There are, there are programs in Madrid that are offered to students to study these things. What is the water supply dealt with? What is the energy situation in Castilla? These are things that our students would be able to look at, also from a historical perspective, they might be able to look at the characteristics that are reflected in this in artwork. And it is quite, quite exciting and quite interesting how that can be looked at. The first part of this project will be carried out this year, and it will involve up to 60 or 70 students, depending on how many of our classes want to participate. And that is what I have, what I have thought would be about the number, and I proposed it to Spain, and they said, okay, we'll try and get 50 or 60 students to cooperate with your 50 or 60 students now, just to lay the basis of this project. When the 2018-19 school year begins, we're going to have to narrow that down to a number of between 15 and 20 students who will be committed to the trip that will go to Madrid. And they will be the core group, which will be bringing themselves to Madrid and presenting a project there for their colleagues at the Spanish school. We haven't really gotten into the details of the project, but I think that the product is quite clear. The product will be, when our students come back from Madrid, they will be able to present to our school at various levels and in various areas, the aspects of, the effects of, or the impacts of climate change on our world. And I would like them to somehow bring it together and say, what is the common aspect that is affecting us in Madrid or affecting them here? What have they seen that are common impacts? As far as the structure of it goes regarding our organization, I'm working very closely with Susan Schmidt and following her pattern, because I have never done it before, I've always traveled with organizations that did all of the footwork, all of the reservations and things, so she will be guiding me in this first year on how to go through that step-by-step. It's a lot of work, it's going to be a lot of work. I have approached colleagues in the department, some of the younger colleagues, and they are willing to participate, some of them on a limited basis at this point, because they still have their family commitments. But I will be looking for one of them to accompany me as a chaperone to Madrid if we were to go in April. I am also going to be reaching down to Lawrence School to see whether any of the Spanish teachers in, at that level are willing to come as chaperones if I can't find someone in the high school. And they have, they have expressed some interest. As far as cost goes, I think that we are working right now on a similar estimate to what the French, the French exchange was looking at, and I believe that that was a, an estimate of $2,000 maximum for a period of two weeks in Madrid. One half of that will be visiting the school and attending classes, and the other half will be dedicated to studying what Madrid has culturally and the environmental aspects of Madrid as well. I don't think there's much else I can say at this point. Please, any questions? Yeah?
One of the things, having done this kind of exchange, that can be problematic is if you don't have host families. So, have you done any surveys yet about?
Not in the least, no. I have not begun anything with this, except twice I've spoken to my students about the possibility, and they were all fired up. I have not gone into that, yep.
In Europe, exchanges are much more common than here.
Yep.
So, it's not so hard to get host families on that side of the ocean over here, so I just wonder if you would start advertising.
I have not pursued it yet, no. I haven't even, we haven't even done a virtual exchange yet, because it would not be worth it to the Spanish students to do it. I am, by the way, one of the things that concerned me was how to include and to touch as many students as possible in this. And I think that the two-year project approach is going to allow for many of the students in school who are not going to be able to travel, nevertheless, to be constantly and deeply involved in the project. When the Spanish students come over, they will be able to deal with them and host them informally in school, and talk to them, and this is one of the aspects of our curriculum that I have been struggling to achieve and have not been able to effectively up till now, and that is how to get our students to be communicating with native speakers regularly. There's not a big enough community locally to be able to do it, and I've tried to do it with private schools and public schools in Spain before, and I made some mistakes. I aimed, for instance, I aimed for juniors and seniors, because I thought, oh, that was the level that they would be able to communicate best. But it turns out that in Spain, juniors and seniors at that age don't want to have anything to do with school, and what they're doing is just preparing for their exams. They don't even attend school. They go in for once a week or something, just to check out what's going on before they have to do their exams. So, that fell flat. And what we're aiming at now is the freshmen this year and the sophomores this year to be able to possibly travel next year. Yeah?
In the first phase, when, when will that communication happen?
I would do it, I would start this week.
And so, would that happen during their Spanish class? Like, I'm just thinking about, when would the students have the opportunity to write?
Yeah. I would propose a subject related to the first step, and they would write this as a homework assignment, they would have time to just work, work it out completely, and the two, the two texts would have to be separate and separate subjects. So, they will be writing to them in English in a greeting, a first greeting, and also in Spanish, but aiming in different directions, because I don't want them to do just Google translations of one text. And then the Spanish student who is studying English will have to answer that English message and answer the Spanish message in Spanish. So, there will be a constant two-language or bilingual communication on two different tracks.
So, it would be students who are in your class would have this as their homework assignment?
Yep.
And so, then you would be able to have part of your class being devoted to this project?
No, in the first phase, I would have a full class do it.
A full class?
A full class of freshmen and full class of sophomores.
I guess I'm just thinking about your, when you, instructional time. Would instructional time during your class be focused on this project?
A certain amount of it, for sure, yeah, sure. Yeah, in fact, it would be a wonderful project to develop an understanding-by-design approach, and saying, what do we want these kids to come away with? What is the product? And then, how do we build this up? Because it's a really, it's, we're beginning this project, and it's exciting in that sense.
Yeah, and it's about authentic communication with bilingual.
I actually love the first-year piece. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to follow up on that, what Carrie was saying about the host families. So, that is the intention?
Yes.
That the students would stay with host families?
Yeah, yeah. And in fact, it'll, I'm still considering how we're going to narrow it down from the large group of students, getting the commitment, how do we pair them? How do we pair them off at the beginning, so that they start talking to each other about, hey, maybe I could stay at your house, you'll stay at my house? I will include this in these early talks, and see whether they can encourage each other to, to commit to the, to the down payment and to the trip. That's going to be, it's going to be a challenge to find the families.
And I'll be glad to help you. I think I sounded negative. There's nothing better in the world than linking these kids up.
Yeah.
I just know that.
Yeah, I agree.
It's so hard to get 20 families to accept kids, because it just is, but I'll be glad to help, I mean that.
Thank you, that would be very nice. And I know that there are other parents of students in my classes who I've talked to who are willing to do it, and who've had experience in it as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other thoughts, comments?
I guess I have a question for, well, it's kind of for Nancy and kind of generally, if we have, is it a problem having all of those students gone at the same time for the French exchange and the Spain exchange?
Part of it's vacation.
One week is vacation.
One week is vacation.
One week's off.
One week's off. I'm sure the high school will make accommodations for kids. It could be 40 kids, right?
In total, yeah.
For 20 for each. So they would have to plan and accommodate for that. But I, I'm sure that the high school would be willing to do that.
Okay. I am going to, as soon as I am able to, I am going to speak to other departments in the school to make sure that they get involved in this project as well. If I can get the art department to maybe commit to a project that is involved, involving this artistically as well, I'll do that. And as far as any literary efforts, I would, I would like to get the, the English language department involved as well. As far as social studies goes, geography, if the kids could come back with a blog or do a blog as an assignment. These are things that are all possible, and I hope that they.
Science, too.
Yeah, of course. The science is the center, the center of it.
Andrew.
You were also saying that when you were approached, that they were sort of sending out messages to find people who'd be interested. Do you know other schools that have made these connections moving forward? Is Falmouth the only one?
No, I have seen the, I have seen the record, some records of other schools that have done it. I have not spoken to anyone.
Because if the consortium had that information, I mean, there might be something, you know, sort of bigger to connect.
Yeah, you're right, yeah. And it's, it is interesting. I don't know whether you saw on the, on the USETAM document, the different universities that are involved in it. These are schools that all have a very big program in Madrid. Middlebury is one of them that I attended in Madrid back in 1974, '5. But they are going to be, I, I don't know exactly what their role is in USETAM, but they are going to be assessing what the exchanges do and what the results are. That's as far as I could see in the documentation. Other than that, yeah, it would be a good idea to try and ask USETAM specifically for some, some history. Yeah, good. Yeah, I'll do that.
Any other thoughts? So my only concern is to have somebody review this. And also to, we, I feel like we did really, well, Ms. Schmidt did really good work in making sure we thought of all the little pieces.
Yes.
And so that whether it's in this agreement or in a supplemental agreement, all of those pieces that we brought to light the first time are somehow incorporated so we don't have to rehash all of it. You know, that's the whole point of having a good model to go by is that we can use those lessons on vetting the host families and vaccines and all those things that we thought about the first time around. I just want to make sure that those pieces are all taken into consideration when we sign stuff.
Background checks.
Yeah, all of those.
Of those families, that type of thing. And Susan has a lot of that information.
I have all of Susan's information, and I submitted that originally to, to the principal. And she said, well, hold that off.
Until it's okay, yeah.
And I think that I will, before I submit it, I will adjust it as far as wording goes, just to adjust it to our program without changing any of the actual specifics.
Right. So however, that needs to happen so that it circles back and we get, we know that all of those pieces are taken care of, is my only concern.
And that is in here, that you refer to that.
Yes, exactly. But, and there was some, I just remember it had to make it back to Nancy at the end.
Yeah.
That's all I want to make sure.
I will.
Any last thoughts?
I already approached them as well as on the vaccinations. I told, I told them about the vaccination issue and supplied them with the official messages.
The requirements.
Requirements.
Is there a motion to approve the exchange program for 2019?
I'm going to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any last discussion? All in favor of approving the field trip, uh, exchange student? I'm on the wrong thing. Approving the exchange program for 2019?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, unanimous.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for putting the time and effort into it. I think it's amazing.
I'm excited.
I'm actually going to ask that we take stuff out of order because I see Ms. Lyons is here, and I don't want her to have to sit through, no offense, Patrick, but the budget presentation. So we'll take out of order and the item for $750, accepting an $1,800 donation to the Lawrence School from the Lyons family. Tom, you joining us, Ms. Lyons?
So I'm Tom Bushy, the principal of Lawrence School, and this is Jennifer Lyons. And last, last summer, Jennifer's, Jennifer's son Nathan tragically passed away, and it was an emotional time for us as a school and a community. And we kept in touch with Ms. Lyons, and at some point Jennifer's mother-in-law, Deborah, who's in the back, reached out and said that the family would like to make a donation to the Lawrence School, which obviously we were happy to have a conversation with them about it. And they came in. I don't want to take too much time if you, I'm happy to explain the process, though. It started as a, as a surprise for Jennifer. The family was going to rally some money and make a donation in some way, some creative way to memorialize Nathan. And the family was very surprised by how much they were able to raise. They rallied $1,800, and we said, that's, that's an awful lot of money. Let's sit down and talk about how we can use it. And at that point Jennifer came in, and we were supremely glad she did because she really was able to glean for us some of the ways that Nathan would really like to see that money be used. And I'll go into as much detail as you guys like, or you can, okay? Nathan was very into chorus, and he was very into reading novels, and, and he appreciated his time in the library. So Sarah Hines and Eileen Cahill came and met with us, and we, we talked about some things that they would maybe ask for that just aren't in the budget. So, for example, Ms. Cahill, and you've all seen the music performances, they are missing, and I didn't know this, but they are missing the ability to hold on to professional, professional, what are they called?
Folders?
Professional folders, okay?
Music folders?
Music folders. And, and Ms. Cahill was obviously just blown out of the water. They, it would cost $900 per set of them. It's just, the money's just not available for us to do. So, so we're going to be able to purchase some of those, and the library, we're going to be able to purchase as many novels that the kids would, that would be interesting to the kids and replace some of the novels that the kids are so interested in that they have worn out with some name, some nameplates that, you know, kids can sit back and read a book and see that they were, they were donated by the family in memory of Nathan. And, you know, one day, you know, we hope, we'll see Dylan come up and read them, who is at East Falmouth Elementary School right now. So, you're welcome. That's, that's what we would like to do with the Lawrence School, and we're, we're, it's emotional for us, but it's very, we're very happy to meet with such an amazing family. And that's all I've said.
I'm so profoundly sorry for your loss. There are no words. So, is there a motion to take stuff? This is very generous.
I'll make a motion. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
It's very generous and a wonderful.
I had things I was going to say, but I thank you.
I can't even imagine being able to find. Please, if you want to say anything, please, I just, I wouldn't be able to say anything. I can't even say anything, and I'm sitting here.
I thought, I thought maybe I could, but thank you.
And thank you. Thanks for sitting through our very long meeting.
Fascinating.
And when you can't sleep at night, you can. Will low yours asleep?
I just found out about Channel 14, so I don't like that.
It's a whole new world.
I mean, it, like Tom was saying, it was a surprise to my husband and I that this was happening behind the scenes for the holidays, and I couldn't think of a better use of the funds, just things that he loved.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now moving backwards, a presentation of the FY19 budget. Patrick, you're up.
Is it okay if I stay here?
Of course.
Yeah, all right. So we have, this is the first public presentation of the superintendent's fiscal year 19 budget. As many of you know, we've, we started this discussion this fall. We've had a number of budget subcommittee meetings. We had a superintendent's priorities discussion earlier, and this slide kind of provides a summary of what the superintendent priorities have been over, over the past few years and, and what it will be going forward. One of the things that the superintendent and I and the, the entire central office have focused on is, is thinking about our budgets in, in longer-term cycles and making sure that if we're going to do something, that we're going to be able to sustain the work that we're going to do.
Can I just add to that, Patrick? So we've made some incremental changes and incremental additions over the past couple of years. And as we planned those, two years ago, we planned the budget three to five years out. For example, we added a nurse and we added adjustment counselors. We made sure that we had CBA's based in every building. We added Steve Edwards as a department chair. So when we, when we did that, we wanted to make sure that we could then sustain anything that we build because there, there is, really isn't a lot of point to creating something that's really great and then after a year saying, oh, you know, we can't afford it. So planning ahead, and I just want to add that Patrick said we started in the fall. We really actually started last spring.
Sure.
We started talking with the town March, April, May because we were sort of forecasting and listening really carefully to what entitlement grants may be doing. So we just kind of watched that, and we're continuing to watch that. But the process started really early, early last spring, and it jumped from the two previous budget cycles. So you see that, A, sort of speaks to that. And then B, we continue to work with the principals to look at testing data so that we can continue to implement, implementing progress on issues of access and equity, focusing on ensuring academic approval for all students. And this is work that happens through our admin council and through our central office meetings. These are ongoing conversations and ongoing planning and making sure that we are making use of data and not just, not just standardized test scores, but different data points and looking at the whole child. Number C, I mean, letter C, supporting that site-based decision-making in budgets for supplies and materials. So again, that happens through the admin council in concert with, with each of our principals. I am committed to bringing on a full-time school adjustment counselor to support the Connect program at the East Falmouth School. You've been aware, we've been talking about this again for the last two budget cycles, that we, we predicted the numbers in that Connect program would continue to grow and that I have a commitment to intervening at the younger ages and, and. We just need it for the cameras. Oh, sure. Providing interventions for our youngest learners. And it's not new that I have asked for a department chair for health, physical education and wellness. What happens is, is you go through the budget cycle, this is what I want, but when the rubber hits the road, there are times when I have to say, I can't do it. So I'm asking for it again. The way the budget is built right now, this position is built into the budget. However, if entitlement grants were to suffer a larger reduction than we're anticipating at this point, that would be something I would not be able to bring to fruition. I hope that's not going to happen for the third year in a row, but I just can't say for sure right now, but I am asking for that.
Next slide? Yep. So this is a bit of a repeat of the previous slide. I think the only addition to this is items three and four. The superintendent, I can speak to the third one, the superintendent did ask me to commit to putting in the full salary of the FHS staff assistant into the local budget. Now, this is the one that, part of this salary is covered by parking fees in this, in this fiscal year and in previous fiscal years. And that, and that history goes back as far as we can tell, 20 years or so, that the parking fees covered. It started off covering all of this salary, and over time, since the parking fee prices were, were not changed, it was, ended up covering partial, partial salary. But the, in this budget, that FHS staff assistant's full salary would be covered.
And just keeping in mind that the school committee has asked that the whole subject of fees for parking at Falmouth High School be re-looked at again this coming spring. And so we fully anticipate that that will happen. And regardless of what you do with that discussion, that assistant will be, will be covered under the operating budget.
Then item four?
Is HR clerical support as needed. You know, we've revamped the entire human resource department, and that has been very, very successful, but there's a level of clerical work that has to be done that's very tedious and very, very important, whether it's around licensing, ELL endorsement. There are lots of pieces that I don't necessarily want Dr. Santa focusing on. I want her doing the big picture stuff, but we need clerical help to make sure those other pieces, which are really, really important, get done and continue to be reviewed and revised.
And I just wanted to sort of lead with the, with the summary is that there is no drama in this budget. We are sticking to the, to the allocation that was recommended by the CFO of 2.65% increase. So that's, that's the end of the story, but we'll give you a little more background. So as you know, or some of you are newer to this than others, that we are early in the, in the whole budget process. Falmouth as a town has a relatively early budget process, especially as compared to cities. The, there are, is a different, is additional information that does come by, come down over the next five or six months that informs this budget and, and future budgets. And we continue to touch base with the town CFO to make sure that all of our assumptions are correct. The governor's budget is supposed to come out tomorrow, so you pay attention to the news and you'll be listening, listening for sort of things like chapter 70 increase or per-student allocation increase or circuit breaker percentages. Those are sort of the keywords you listen for. But we're pretty conservative in our estimates with the, with the town CFO, and we're not overly worried about, about any big news or impacts from the governor's budget or the, the final House and Senate budget. The things that we do pay attention to very closely because they would, we do expect them to impact the district are federal entitlements, entitlement grants, the title grants, one, two, three, four, and they continue to go. We don't have any, any strong guidance on what those look like at this time. We're estimating that the professional development grant, Title II-A, could be cut entirely as there has been proposals out of the executive office and the House of Representatives that that grant be cut entirely. In trends that we've seen in Title I are, tend to go down, and we're kind of estimating at this point about a 10% cut in those entitlement grants. The. The challenge here is we never find out what the actual numbers are until well into the summer, if not the fall. So we have to make our best estimates there. The numbers from a local perspective, I mentioned the 2.65% increase. Our estimate when we move everybody forward on enrollment trends is that will be about 3450. And you see in the budget book, I think it's, I don't know, Agenda item number three, I think, you'll see the trends in enrollment. Overall, utility costs look good. And the big one that is always a concern to school districts is out-of-district special education tuitions. We are lucky and good. We've been working really hard as a school district with our special educators, our student, Department of Student Services, and the superintendent over the past three years to manage those accounts and improve our services to children. And those numbers look flat for next year also. This is just a nice comparison chart, right, to show what our enrollment trends have been over the last bunch of years and what our budget looks like going forward. We've made some, we've made some progress over the years and overall, our enrollment is a little bit down, but overall, probably flat. We'll go to the next slide and there's, yeah, there we go. So this is just kind of a cohort slide that shows where we are with various age groups. If you look at that K-1, 2, I've talked to other business managers across the region and that cohort has shown a bit of a decline. In one of the, one of the suggestions is that if you look back a few years and see the depth of the recession of 2009, 10, 11, that's when those children were born and people probably weren't ready to have children when the recession was in full bloom. So this is a chart just showing you comparisons to the state spending, per-student spending. And I split it out to show in-district spending versus out-of-district spending. And I just wanted to show you that to give you an indication that the overall per-student spending number may look like it's jumped. Those dollars aren't available to the superintendent to spend. Those include charter school tuitions, tech school tuitions, out-of-district tuitions, those types of things. So it's just a way to compare. If you look at 2016, the per-student spending for, in-district for the state is $15,690. Statewide is $15,024. Not a huge difference, you know, of the district to the state. This is an important number that Falmouth has been, I think, a number of years ago surprised with the uptick. And three years ago, there was a change, or two or three years ago, there was a change in how the state counted children who are economically disadvantaged. And that did show the little blip of going up and then down. But as you can see, that the number of 35% of our children being qualifying for free and reduced lunch is, has been steady. And for the public's information, free and reduced lunch is the way public schools identify children who are in poverty. So this is, this is some of the challenges that we were faced in this budget. And then, and I also have to suggest that we've had some opportunities too. As you all know, you did approve a general education transportation contract extension for two more years at 4.5%. That was good news, relatively speaking, even though that's a percentage increase that's higher than the rest of our budget and it is very competitive with what rates other districts are seeing when they're going out to bid. So we're doing fine on that, even though it's a percentage increase that's greater than we'd like to see. We mentioned the entitlement grants and the trending downward. We do enter into negotiations with our food service employees and our custodial employees this spring. And then we jump right back into negotiations with the FBA sometime next year. Opportunities, I do, again, one more time, we've done a nice job on how we're handling our out-of-district costs and how we've maintained and built up our circuit breaker rollover. Some of the work that we've done on capital investments will begin to pay off in terms of our overall energy costs. We're fortunate that inflation seems to remain flat and that the work that we've done around generating school choice students has benefited the district in, around, especially around technology and curriculum investments. Last slide, or two slides. This is a slide that I put in there just to make sure that you all have a chance to think about the budget in a long, with a long-term view. And it's the way we have learned to think about the budget. This isn't just a one-year, one-off budget. We have, we have challenges, opportunities, strengths and weaknesses, like any district does. These are some of the things that we have to keep our eyes on. I'm not, the sky is not falling in any way, shape, or form, but we just have to pay attention to these things. We understand that the challenges that our students are facing have become more intense across the district and we are trying our best to meet those needs. We also understand that we have a fantastically experienced staff. That is a huge blessing to the district and to the students that we serve. 72% of the district's staff are at the top step. That is, that is higher than other districts. And 81%, 82% of the overall budget is salaries. So that says things about maintaining our current staff. And then from a principal's perspective, what happens if they do get a significant turnover in staff? What does that mean in terms of professional development down the road? So the principals are thinking down the road also. What we do every spring is take a look very, very carefully about where we need to allocate staff. And it's, the old analogy is you don't need, you don't need three people to play first base if you are missing a third baseman. You have to allocate staff to where the children's services, where servicing the children is required. And then finally, not to be the doom and gloomer, we've been in an economic growth cycle for eight, a good eight strong years. Economic recessions do happen. They do impact municipalities and schools, sometimes more, sometimes less. So we have to be very careful about assuming that the good times will always be rolling. So we have to be very careful and very thoughtful about sustaining what we're doing in this district for the next three, five years. And then the superintendent and I have sort of had a debate on whether or not we want to repeat ourselves for the next five or six meetings or five or six times we do this or if there's additional information that we might provide. You all did get sort of a taste of the new, the new DESI tool called Radar, which allows us to do some comparisons among districts that allows you to ask different questions and things like that. So we may do that if there's interest. But my point to you or my sort of summary to you is take a look at that big white book that you all picked up. If there's questions directly about that budget book that you want to ask me, please give me a call. We can set up meetings. If there are sort of more 40,000-foot level questions about how do we compare against other districts and what manner, we can dig into those questions through some of the tools that are public tools, but we do have some ability to navigate those tools easily and then present them. They present better when you post them up there. They don't, they don't transfer into PowerPoint presentations, so. I know you, I don't, I don't think anybody's picked up their book on Friday and went through it already. No? Good. That's fine. You had a weekend. You had a weekend. Good. That's a good thing. So, so once you get into it, I'm sure additional questions will come up.
Do you have any?
I have a question. As far as looking at the staffing, I mean, that's definitely where our money goes.
That's where it goes.
In looking at, you know, 72% of the district teaching staff is at the top step of the salary structure. Is there, I'm thinking about these tools and things. Is there a way to kind of project what that might look like in retirements over years?
So we've tried, if you're, I think what you're asking is can we project how many retirements might be out there?
Yes, in...
Right. So, yeah, so we tried, we tried that.
We looked at that.
And we did, did some, took a look at them and we, this was last year, and we saw there was like 45 people between the, like 58 or 59 and above. So you might guess that, okay, maybe there's 15 a year over the next three years, something like that. Well, that's not what happened.
You just never know when someone's going to up and retire.
Right. Well, I guess I... My question was kind of broader scope of thinking like, over the next 10 years, could we potentially have this many? Because I look at that as a shift in our, where we put our money, right? So we put much more money into professional development and mentoring and supports, you know, for new staff. And in seeing this, I've just, you know...
So the other, the other way of saying that, I always think, okay, maybe I'm not good enough at forecasting this stuff. And I ask around, are there other people who have better forecasting methods on this? And I, in, one, I haven't found the expert. And two, the other side of this, and you being in education, for decades, we've heard that there was going to be a looming shortage of teachers in Massachusetts. That hasn't shown up yet. No, those experts who predicted that huge shortage of teachers in Massachusetts, there's still not, I don't know where that was...
But they do have them elsewhere. You know, other states are experiencing those.
In other states. And other states. And those states tend to be where there's massive population growth. That's where, that's, those are the states that tend to experience some shortage of teachers. So I haven't found a way to sort of drill into the local demographics and say, yep, I have a formula or, you know, best guess on this. We did try it, I think it was a year ago.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Patrick? So my only other comment is that our next meeting will be the public hearing on the budget. So I'll just throw that out there so that people remember.
So just as far as the budget books, you all have budget books. It's the superintendent's budget. It's, I am now, tomorrow, will be presenting the, or dropping the budget books off at the libraries. The budget book, a budget book is available in the superintendent's office. We'll drop one or two off at town hall. So there is, we will get, eventually get the entire budget scanned and up on the website. It will be available for the public.
Yeah, okay. And the one page that I've looked at in the budget book, I just have a question about that. So it goes through, it's the comparison chart.
Yep.
And on 2007, and fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18, it says on the bottom, includes out-of-district placement and grade 13.
This is your slide. In grade 13, yeah.
Right, the kids are...
Yeah, the enrollment.
Now, it doesn't have that for 16 or 15. Did we not include that?
No, I think it's included across the board. Yeah. That's the standard way it's counted.
Okay, so it should be in all of those...
Just carried over.
Okay.
All right. Great.
Thanks.
Thanks, Patrick. Next up is acting on the 2018-19 school year calendar. So we reviewed this at our last meeting. John had a couple of questions about the dates, but Sharon double-checked them and they were all perfect. Are there any comments on this? We'll just take it. So anyone want to make a motion to approve the calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar for our school year 2018, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Great. All in favor of approving the calendar for the 2018-19 school year?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yeah, that's perfect. Great. That was easy. Next, we have discussing and acting on hiring an outside search agency. So I just want to mention that I can see that it would, might look like we're moving really fast because we just had the announcement of our superintendent's retirement and we're already taking action. But just because we're starting doesn't mean that the process is going to be rushed. It will be thoughtful and thorough. It's just that we're taking the first steps today. And I also want to mention that even though we recently solicited a lot of public opinion in terms of, you know, we had online surveys and focus groups when we hired Nancy, even though we've done it recently, I fully anticipate that we'll do it again. It worked really well last time so that the public is aware that we're going to be looking for input from our community, our families, our teachers, our administrators about what they, what they want and see as a good fit. And we're expecting it to be a smooth transition as we find whoever is the best fit to lead us in the coming years. So I had sent tons of information. Everybody has all the information that we collected about different outside search agencies. Is there any discussion about, any, or questions about the information that we got? Do we have a motion? How would you like to take this?
Don't you have to make a motion first? Do they have the discussion?
Yeah, we should because we listed it a little bit differently. I was willing to do it differently if necessary.
I'll make a motion to approve Cape Cod Collaborative Executive Search Company, or...
Yeah, I don't know what the organization, I suppose.
To facilitate our process.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on using an outside search agency, the Cape Cod Collaborative's Executive Search? Any comments, discussion? Anyone want to add? So, so I want to also add that we did look at different organizations that help lead a superintendent's search and also considered the possibility of doing it ourselves. And I'm willing to, however everyone wants, I'm happy to do. I am grateful for having the input of an outside organization, though, that's for sure. I think it will make for a stronger search. Any other discussion? All in favor of acting on hiring an outside search agency, the Cape Cod Collaborative?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. So I will pursue that and work with them to put together a contract and scope of what that work will look like. that work will look like. So related to that, we also have discussing and acting on the posting of the superintendent's job description. Everybody should have that as well. It is the job description and posting of vacancy that came out of the work that we did last time when we hired Nancy. A lot of work went into this. I'm very appreciative to Alan Jacobs and everybody that worked with him to put this together. I think it's very thorough. It does, at the end, have space for where the applications will be mailed to. So if we're going to act on this, we would need to amend that to reflect the organization that's going to be used as an outside search agency.
Motion that we approve the posting of vacancies superintendent of schools for Falmouth Public Schools with two amendments. With amendment of the salary rate.
Okay.
To 170.
Okay.
And the amendment of where the materials should be emailed, mailed, faxed, or delivered. And that would be to be determined based on our work with Cape Cod Collaborative.
Okay.
There's also an amendment that the following materials should be submitted and received by the first bullet Chevron-ish, the MASC. We were going to have it, the application's available from Falmouth Public Schools.
Okay. So that would, under the application process, the application for employment would be available on the Falmouth Public School page, since we're not using MASC to host that. Okay. So we have a motion with three changes. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Melissa? Any other discussion about it?
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify, under that same application process, that we are sure of the date that materials must be received by.
Okay.
So. Whether it entered that contract and.
Right.
How that timeline will play out, are we comfortable with what's here?
So I got that, I based that number on the timeline from last time, and also input from Glenn Kutter on how long a search needs to run. That's how that, that's where I got that number, for February 21st. I think it's a fair point. I also don't think that it's unreasonable that we would change it if we needed to. You know, I imagine we're going to have updates on this frequently. I'm sure at our next meeting, we'll be looking at a timeline. So if we needed to amend that date in our timeline, tops?
Could we put "to be determined" there?
Want to do that?
And then that way, we're not, just in case we can't make that date.
Feeling like we're not keeping our.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. So now we have four changes. We have taking out the date, changing the location of the application, changing the salary, and changing the location of the, where the applications will be submitted. Any other?
I made a motion.
You made a motion that included the changes?
Two changes.
No, Melissa reminded you of the third. First was an amendment.
Okay, so I needed to add that, that was added to the motion. Okay.
And then this is an additional, this is an amendment.
Right?
Yes.
Yes.
That's right. So this is an amendment to the, right, so we need to vote on her amendment.
Correct.
Is there any discussion on the amendment that Andrea has suggested for the "to be determined"? Okay, so now we're just going to agree on that last, because it's an amendment to the original motion. All in favor of leaving "to be determined" instead of a closing date?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we've got that fixed. All right, any last thoughts about this? Any other comments? Okay. So all in favor of approving the posting of vacancy with four changes as amended?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I don't think anyone seconded that, did they?
Yes.
I did.
Yeah. Melissa did. Okay, so I will move forward with meeting.
I'm sure you had that, yeah.
I'll move forward with meeting with the representatives from the collaborative, filling in those pieces and getting it posted. So the, I mean, the most important piece is to get the word out. We're a desirable district. We just need people to know that we're looking. Moving on. Routine business, minutes. So everybody should have in their packet an amended version, the one that has the pink Is there a motion to approve the amended version of the minutes from January 9?
I think they're yellow, the minutes.
No, mine are white. They're all different colors.
They are, they're white. They're white and revised. The calendar was yellow.
There were no substantial changes. It was just spelling, pardon me?
Chromatical errors, it wasn't a big deal.
Commas, and no content was edited, in case anyone wanted to. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from January 9?
I'd like to approve the minutes from January 9.
Thanks, Andrea. Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion, changes, comments? All in favor of approving the minutes from January 9?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Great. Unanimous again. Report from the superintendent.
I just have three quick hits. Firstly, in your packet is a safety letter that was posted on our website. It simply speaks to the drills that we do in the schools. I thought it was important to put something out as part of our CEMP. It's on our website, and it has become part of our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Number two is our, the Fields Task Force and Planning Committee is moving on. We had our first community forum on the 19th at the Morse Pond School. We had a couple of school committee members there. I think Megan was there, Bill Ryder was there. So that was good. And the subcommittee, we're divided into three subcommittees within that group. We have a community concerns, we have a health committee, and then we have a committee that looks at the financial aspect. And so my subcommittee did the first presentation, and Sonya's will do the second on February 1st, looking at the health concerns. And we have a meeting in between this Thursday at 5:00 here at the administration building. And I believe we'll be joined by Ray Jack from the DPW, and Peter McConerty from the town also. And I believe that CDM will be there. So this is a big meeting on the 25th. I look forward to that.
What time is that?
5:00.
When is the next community?
February 1st.
Thank you.
So that committee is.
They're working.
Is moving right along. And then, thirdly, I just, I added Tracy Craig's VIPS Director's Report for you to take a look at in your packets.
Great, thanks. Any questions for Nancy?
I actually just wanted to make a comment, and thank you for including the Director's Report from VIPS. This is the report that we see every month at the board meetings, and this is all what happens in one month's time. That organization is just doing so much good work. And also, if you hadn't noticed, that VIPS will be the recipient of the Heritage Award this year from the Falmouth Historical Society. So very excited.
I think I might have put that in my briefing at one point.
Thanks. Any questions for Nancy? All right, moving along. Questions for directors?
As you can see, Dr. Santa and Zach Waterker were not able to be here tonight, unfortunately.
Well, we have a lot of that. Everybody seems to be sick, and we're missing a couple of people in the school committee as well. Sorry, I'm trying to catch up. I'm going between two packets, and I'm all discombobulated. All right, so we don't have Zach, but we have Charlie. Charlie, is there anything you want to highlight from your report?
Just two things. I would like to publicly thank the Cape Cod Church for their donation prior to the Christmas break of Walmart gift cards and Stockin Shop gift cards that we distribute to our school adjustment counselors, and they're able to use with families who are struggling during that time of year. They are very generous to us, and they did this last year, and then they did this again this year. And they've been just great folks to work with over these past few years, and their generosity is much appreciated, and I know by our families as well. The stories, our school adjustment counselor's come back telling us when they are contacting these families or family, literally contacting them, asking for help or some direction to navigate, really just says a lot about the work that they do, and particularly the work and generosity of our neighbors. So I want to thank them. I'll give you an update on the wellness committee, and then finally, I talk about what is called the Deveraux Student Strengths Assessment. I think I gave some pretty good rundown about that, and I can answer any questions you might have regarding that.
We sure had them last time. This is great. Thank you so much for following up on that. Any questions for Charlie?
I do have a question. Now, I was seeing that our school physician, Dr. Parkinson, is part of the wellness. Was our last physician also part of the wellness?
No.
So I just, I love seeing that and how active he is being. It's just.
He is a wonderful, wonderful partner and collaborator with us. As some of you may or may not know, I meet with our district nurses every month. He also, 7:30 in the morning every month, is also in attendance.
That's great.
And has just been a great partner. We've had many situations where sometimes either our principals have had kind of questions on the medical side, or kind of situations that come up within the schools in addition to our nurses. And he is easily available to consult with us and just is really, really committed to the work he's doing.
Excellent. I have one more camera, too. So, yeah, we had a lot of questions about the new assessment.
We did.
And it looks like this is kind of a baseline social emotional assessment, so a little bit different than what we were thinking last time. So this would be given to every student?
It is designed for students K through 8. They currently do not have a high school model or one. I mean, there are other high school tools, but the reliability and validity of some of those tools are questionable. This one isn't. I can actually, it can be given up to four times a year. There are four different forms. I actually can pass around two of the forms.
Oh, yeah.
To kind of show you the type of questions that are asked. It's something as simple as, during the past four weeks, how often did the child keep trying when unsuccessful? Or attract positive attention from adults? Or work hard on projects?
So this is an observational?
It's observational.
It's not something that the kids actually fill out?
No.
It's observational by the teacher, which is a huge difference.
And our teachers, and I think I try to make the point of this a little bit, our teachers are doing this already.
Yeah.
They are attuned to those observations of when something is off or something isn't right, and they'll, you know, raise questions or do what they do best. This is simply giving them a tool to guide what they, in one sense, informally do. But it's a statistically reliable tool that if you want to think, I mean, you simply just add up, as you can see there, you know, a few numbers, and it kind of gives what you could almost see as a red flag, yellow flag, or green flag. And if a student was kind of marked as a red flag, well, we would look further, what might be going on. I mean, kids have off days as well. There are longer forms that a school adjustment counselor could do, or there are interventions that we would do. Again, we're doing this already. It's simply putting some scientific best practice around what is done more informally, which takes out the element of error.
Right. I was guessing.
So will there be training on doing this assessment?
So we're moving very slowly. In the perfect world, we would have implemented it this, you know, this term, let's say. But no, we want to move slowly. So it's something that most probably wouldn't happen until next year, so that we can really work with everyone involved, our clinicians or teachers along the way. And we're having discussions right now around those type of next steps, or how best to do it. We also learn from our brethren, and Barnstable actually has implemented this this year. And so we will learn from them. And they already have begun, and they're working right now at a stage where they are doing interventions for those students that they feel. So I have conversations with Gina Hurley about kind of what they've learned going through this as well.
Charlie, is this part of the student's permanent record? How is this saved?
No, this would simply be shredded and destroyed as soon as it's done.
So how do we learn from it? How do we look at it and say, there were a red flag on their first and second to go around, but this is now our third and fourth?
Oh, in terms of, yes. So in terms of how we would data collection that, we would do it like we currently do, for example, with our IST process. It isn't kind of so much part of a permanent record, but it is part of the working documents that, for example, a school adjustment counselor would have in seeing students and meeting with students. So all the issues of confidentiality fall within it.
Okay. Andrea?
Charlie, at what point did Benny does this information, gets shared with families?
Well, it's a great question. I would say, first of all, if a student needed interventions, we certainly would be reaching out to a family for, much like we would if we felt a student would benefit from maybe being in a lunch bunch group. The school adjustment counselor reaches out with this family and says, you know what, I really think, what do you think? And they would have that kind of getting some consent. So we would seek consent if indeed we felt a student would benefit from some specific type of intervention that we thought would be put in place. So definitely, it's kind of case by case with if we saw there was concern that needed to be addressed, and by whom.
Awesome. Yeah, go ahead.
So would this be given to every child, or is it just children that there's concerns about?
No, we would look to do it as a universal screener, much like we already do academically with our DIBELS or our, you know, reading and math interventions, screenings that we do, you know, a few times each year. So it could be something as simple as, you know, one time a year. If you notice, they're simple questions. It's a matter of saying, yeah, I saw this, or no. And those are more of the details that we would work out. But we would look to kind of do it, again, much like we do with our academic screenings universally.
Okay. Questions for Charlie? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Learned a lot on that. It's awesome. Cindy, want to highlight anything from your report?
Not really. I passed out, and I do want to apologize. I meant to get you the, as I referenced, the spring 2018 computer-based testing tech specs in my report, and I gave this to you tonight. I meant to give it to you right before. It just comes out, this actually came out in December. Every year it comes out, and we use it to see where we are in terms of readiness, and also, and looking at minimum, recommended and minimum requirements helps us to kind of plan for the future.
Looks like foreign language to me. Any questions for Cindy? Yeah, this is way over my head. I'm glad you're.
Can I actually ask a question about the E-Rate?
Finally, yeah.
What kind of savings is that? It's a lot.
It varies each year because of, we don't, the percentage is given to us. When I first started here in Falmouth, we were 50%. Now we're 60.
60% savings or 60% that we're paying?
No, we save 60%. We pay 40.
Wow.
For eligible services, though. It's not just anything.
Yeah.
And those eligible services change every year. So it's very particular, very highly audited, the U-Rate program.
But it's enough money that it's worth taking the time to do it?
Our internet access, for instance, is part of that. And so we are looking, we don't often do category two. We have the op and on for the last couple of years to do improvements with infrastructure. But because of the fact that while we have 60%, we keep looking, okay, let's be very thorough, what do we need to replace while we can't now with that kind of a saving? What do we need to replace while we can now with that kind of savings?
Right. And is that what all school districts have? Do all school districts get 60%?
No. It's based on your free and reduced lunch.
Okay, it's based on your percentage, yes?
We have to get a certified form signed up by a director of services and off it goes.
So if you have 90% free and reduced, does that mean you get a higher percentage off?
I believe, and again, because we're, some of your urban districts, we are 85%.
Must cap out at something, I would think.
Interesting.
So cool. Thank you for spending time. Any other questions for Cindy? Thank you so much. And Patrick already got to do his thing.
I just want to compliment Cindy. She's a little undersells herself. She's dogged in terms of, in terms of going after the E-rate reimbursements. And we just had a little success after about three years of work on getting something back. So she does a nice job.
Thank you, for sure. Report from the chair. I only have one comment, which is to, you know, let me know if you want to have a table at FES, at the gala. It would be so fun.
So I did send in my, I bought a ticket, so I do want to be part of a table.
Great. Well, let's talk about that, but not now because it's getting late and I'm tired. But I would really love if we all win and enjoyed that together. I don't have anything else. Oh, I guess I do. And coming up, so I, I'm so appreciative to Sharon for putting this together so that we can see, so I can make mention of meetings that are coming up because we have so many things going on. And then when search stuff starts happening, we'll have even more going on. So coming up, so the field committee, Nancy already met, mentioned, and then the community forum for the field and policy is meeting on the 6th. Other than that, I don't have anything else coming up. And I already mentioned that our public hearing on the budget is at our next school committee meeting on the 13th. And we don't have anything else on that day except for budget subcommittee at 4:00. Okay, so anyone wants to come to budget? Just to wear in the habit of looking ahead a little bit, I think, it will be helpful for me. So I just, if you don't want me to do it, let me know. But I think it's helpful to be planning ahead. Any requests for agenda items or follow-up information?
We did talk about starting a calendar task force last time, looking at possible dates that would work for that and seeing if there's a group who'd be interested.
How do you want to go, you want someone to?
You were going to reach out to Sharon, right?
Right?
That's what I understood from our last
Oh, no. Okay, my understanding was Sharon was going to find a date that works for you and then send it to.
Okay.
But we also want to make
We're fancy?
Yeah.
And we'll try and plan around that.
Okay.
I also still have on my things that we are looking into about the MASC policy accessibility online stuff and SEI compliance. So I haven't forgotten about questions from before. I'm hanging on to them.
Actually, I did bring that back to Sonya and if she can have a minute to follow up.
That'd be great. We can shake it off the list. That'd be great.
Sure. So based on DESI's most current reporting, 80% of our core academic teachers are endorsed. And we have less than a handful of core academic teachers who have had an L in the calendar year that they're now being pushed into that endorsement piece for compliance and licensure. And then because of the way the courses are offered, that they're in the routine semesters where it's fall semester and spring semester, fall semester just finished. And so we're going through the process of DESI releasing the endorsement information. So we did a sweep this week and we found a few more. And there are a couple of educators we know took not the collaborative offering, but another offering. So hopefully, once their grades are posted and pushed up, we'll have that information on their licensure. And we have a couple of educators that we've connected to opportunities. I think Old Rochester Regional is probably the furthest one for the current semester. They don't offer it in the summer because of the pieces that have to be done for coursework in classrooms. So we have a few out now and then we're expecting a couple more people to take advantage. Cape Cod Collaborative has confirmed they're going to offer additional courses, excuse me, in the fall.
And how about administrators?
Administrators, we were, I think we had one person who took and passed the course and needed to file the application. And then that covers all of our school and all of our department heads that were permitted. We had a couple of department heads that tried just because they wanted the experience and got pushed out. So we're trying to get them into the four cost opportunities now and support them with that. So we're in really good shape as administrators. It's a pretty high percentage. And then covering all of the teachers with endorsements, they're all paired with an administrator with an endorsement. So we've got a pretty, pretty solid foundation on which we're, we're just building.
Any other? You good? Want anything else?
Yeah.
Awesome. Happy to take something off the list. Any other requests for agenda items or follow-up information? Subcommittee reports?
Okay.
Well, then I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yay. That was a long one. Thank you, guys. Sticking with us.